This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, let us call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for December 9th, 2025 at 6:01 PM. We will be recording tonight. We don't have a livestream being up in this room. So we'll be recording tonight and it'll be posted up on our website within a day or so. And we chose to come up here tonight largely because we have a Zoom presentation and we had some Zoom technical difficulties that are room downstairs at our last meeting, so we didn't want to take that chance. So here we are. So we're getting the orders. Let us stand inside the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Thank you. So do we have anybody here for Citizens' Street for anything that's not on the actual agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay. You want to come on up? Just to stand up and say your name and address, please?
Jeff Fodor, 46 Bludson Street.
Okay.
I'm here about a proposed solar facility. I don't know if anybody's heard about it, but there's a big commercial solar facility that's going to be proposed on Bludson Street coming up. I guess from my understanding, they've already applied to the Conservation Commission. And that is supposed to be, I've heard, it'll be on the upcoming agenda for the Monday meeting. So I don't know. I looked on the agenda for Monday for the Conservation Commission and it actually lists something from March. So that's not up to date, I guess. Then after that, it'll be, you know, go through planning and planning board people.
Okay.
So what I'm here basically to request is any of these meetings upcoming for this solar facility, I would like them to be not just Zoom. It appears to me that any meeting for planning or conservation are just Zoom meetings. But it really, you know, it kind of eliminates people who either can't or won't attend Zoom meeting, although they might have some input or concerns or just want to be there. So I don't know how to go about doing that, but I mean, at least have it in person. But ideally have it both Zoom and in person. That would cover everybody, I guess. But I mean, here I'm just looking at, this looks like it's going to be a Zoom and in-person meeting, but to have it just Zoom, I just don't see how that's accessible to the public or, you know, for in-person assessment.
Okay. No, thanks for those comments. We can certainly share that information with Concom and Planning Board. I know for a long time Planning Board had been meeting in-person downstairs, but I don't know what they've done lately, if they've been more on Zoom or not. Concom, I know, has been on Zoom quite a bit lately. That tends to be their way of operating and a lot of that came into play pretty much, I think, as of the end of COVID. We had the dispensation where we didn't have to have in-person meetings. It was all Zoom, so people, you know, were able to continue those meetings. But I get your point. We can share that information with those two committees.
Okay. For this, you know, I don't know if I'm right or not, but again, I hear that the meeting on Monday is going to have it on the agenda for the solar facility.
Well, if what's posted is not, if it's not on the agenda, they can't have it.
What's on the agenda, what's posted is not the agenda for Monday. It's the agenda for something in March.
Oh, okay.
So it's not up to date. But all I'm saying is, my understanding, we're all butters of the agenda.
I see. Okay.
So we should be notified somehow, some way, I guess by certified mail. I don't know.
Okay.
Which we haven't yet. So I'm just hoping that we have enough information upfront or, you know, notification before the fact. That's all.
Okay. No, I think those are valid points. I would tend to think that the butters list happens when there's a planning board meeting. I'm not positive about a Concom meeting, but we can, I think it should be both and we'll relay that and we'll check on whatever the agenda is for the 15th. If it's not posted for the 15th, then it shouldn't be discussed.
Okay.
Okay. It should be on a different, a different night, a different agenda. If it's not a subject on the agenda that's been posted.
Okay.
Okay. We'll pass that information. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for open time?
Sandra Adams, 40 Bludson Street. We found out about this in September, about this whole proposed solar arrays coming, agro voltaic. If someone doesn't look that, they put them up like 10 feet plus high. So we're very concerned and we would like to have it in person, just like I just said, because there's a lot of people, it's very daunting to do this all. Some of our neighbors don't even have computers. So it's very daunting and they would probably, even if it's cold, they would come out to voice their opinion. So yeah, we'd appreciate it if somehow we would be able to do that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
Janet King, Glade Hill Road. I did look it up. In the 17th is a planning board meeting. It looks like it's scheduled for the first floor unless something changes between now and the 17th. There's no agenda posted.
This is my understanding that the planning board, they're going to apply to planning and planning, but that hasn't even happened yet. But they did apply already for notice of intent to Concom. And that's Monday, the 5th. Right. So that's coming up quick.
Yeah. Okay.
If there's a way that even someone either swats forward or something could get a hold of Concom and request it to be repaired.
Certainly. Yeah. Can do that. No, we'll pass the information on. Absolutely. So thank you guys for showing up. Much appreciate your bringing the issue to our attention and we will...
We love our street that day. I've seen it glow this street.
Indeed. All right. Thank you very much. All right. If there's none other...
You're tracking just right on the order of activity. We don't actually have a vote on this.
I'm sorry?
Right.
We have no vote on this.
Yeah, so we're not involved at all in, if we get it, we're not asked to go to...
We appreciate that you are bringing it to our attention and that Zoom only is a problem. But everything I've heard you report is tracking, you know, normal process and permitting and those specialty boards, commissions have the expertise and the authority to shut those...
Yeah, we're all known to this. So if you could help us.
Sure. Good.
I don't mean to pass the buck, but it never does come to us.
We're all citizens of Southampton, right? We're all homeless citizens of Southampton. It may be our street, you know, 2026, 2027, but it's going to be other streets too, because they're hitting Western Mass really, really hard.
Thank you very much. All right. Good. We'll proceed with the agenda if that's it. I would like to make a motion here. Have a motion to just swap the order a little bit? Yeah, just to swap the order. So if we can do that. Stephen, you want to make that one?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we take up appointments out of order on the agenda this evening and take the meeting.
Okay. Second? Second? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we have at least one person here I know who's involved in the appointments, so we'll do that. We have two appointments this evening and I will speak on one of them because I was part of the group that was, I was at the meeting. So this is for Kathleen Caputo, Mountain Dew Circle, an appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust. This is a new appointment. This will be a one-year term to expire June 30th, 2026. These are staggered appointments. We've already appointed people for two-year terms, so this is a staggered appointment. Kathy couldn't be here tonight, but she has had some 44 years of banking, concentrating in residential lending, and she's been a 10-year volunteer with Habitat for Humanity. She moved into Southampton in 1984 and has been very busy with her career. She's been involved in underwriting and originating residential mortgages. And so she's always helped people, enjoyed helping people get into new homes. And so this is a chance that she feels that she would like to give back to the community that she's called home. So we thank her for stepping up and I would like to take a motion to accept Kathy Caputo as a new appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kathy Caputo to the one-year term, Affordable Housing Trust, to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Very good. Thank you. All right.
Do you want a motion or do you have two?
Second one, we have a person to speak on. So the second one is for the Board of Assessors and the candidate would be Joanne Griffin, and this is a new appointment until the next election. This is normally an elective position, so it'd be till the next election on May 19th, 2026. And we have the Chair of the Board of Assessors here. Linda, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Linda Green, 25 Palmoran Meadow Road. Joanne Griffin's been a resident of the town for 50 years and she would be appointed filling the seat of Cindy Palmer, who used to be the Chair of the Board. Joanne has, as I said, she's lived in Southampton for 50 years. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration. She also has an Associate in Medical Radiology. I'm sure I said that incorrectly. She was a technician and also did medical coding. In that time, she also for 12 years was the owner and operator of a restaurant and bar in Springfield. So she comes with a lot of finance background. She knows how to manage and run a business. She knows about state regulations and guidelines. And she's also attended several of our meetings so far. I think she'd be a great fit. She brings some good basic knowledge and she's very eager to learn more about the Board and its operations.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion then?
Yeah, I move that we appoint Joanne Griffin to the Board of Assessors. This is a new appointment until the next election on May 19th, 2026.
Second.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. All right. Very good. So the next step will be that they will get a letter from the Assistant Town Administrator, Judy Zedonis, will send them a letter of appointment and they would need to make an appointment with the town clerk next week to get sworn in. Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. And just a comment. So thank you, Linda, for being here. And also just to reiterate, part of one of our general bylaws in terms of just committee organization and how committees should function in town was that when people do want to volunteer, there is the application online for people to fill out and to add in either a resume or a CV about their experience and why they would like to serve. But we do encourage them to certainly make contact with that committee or board first, make themselves known, attend a couple of meetings or so and kind of get familiar with what the work of that committee is and the time commitment. So I'm very pleased to hear that. And I know that also happened with Kathy Caputo, who attended the last Affordable Housing Trust meeting. So glad to see that that process is happening. So we try to make sure that everybody's informed. So if a letter comes in directly to Scott's Assistant Judy, that we get it out to the Board Chair. So that's our process and we will keep on doing it that way. So thank you for...
Just a note, and I spoke with Judy today. When I was appointed to fill the remainder of the term, I was unaware of all of this. My notice is I put in the application resume and then I got a call. And one of the things I appreciated was you let me know that she was going to be on the agenda for this week, you not having known that we'd even spoken or that you'd attended meetings. In talking with Judy about that, we talked about maybe a minor change to the form, the application itself.
Okay.
And I took the liberty of taking a stab at it and just adding a line at the bottom that says, reviewed by whatever board, committee, commission they are interested in serving on. So I can pass it on to you later to take a look at that.
Yeah, we probably need a couple of edits on that form anyway. I wouldn't be surprised. So that would be a good idea. All right. Thanks, Linda. Appreciate your time. All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay, let's go back up to the presentation tonight, which is our main focus.
Jim.
And we will have James Maisick from the AICP Consulting Service and Mike Kennedy from the Center for Living and Working. Is that right?
That's right.
Perfect. All right. Well, we'll let you...
Yeah, we'll start with introductions and actually Mike, because the contract that Southampton had was with Center for Living and Working, Inc. And actually, we worked as a partnership, but the client was with them. So let Mike introduce himself, background, and then I'll do the same and go through the format of presentation tonight.
All right. Sounds great. First and foremost, thank you, Scott, and the town of Southampton for enabling me to participate in this meeting, be it so. And I would also like to, on behalf of the Center for Living and Working, thank the town of Southampton for choosing the Center for Living and Working in partnership with Jim Maisick to administer your ADA self-evaluation plan and to thank all the town, you know, staff who helped Jim and I along the way when we were doing our site surveys. So that being said, I will turn it over to Jim to let him introduce himself. Then I'll be back to talk about the self-evaluation portion of the planned results. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. So I'm a seasoned or grizzled, 40-plus-year professional planner by trade, worked in City Gloucester, Tonahail and Tonahail Bellstown, and this is my public sector. And then the past 32 years prior to my retirement in 2020, for public sector with the Department of Planning Commission, I was Deputy Director there and also Site Team Development Department as well. We did hundreds of millions of construction projects and other projects throughout our region in central Mass. Did a lot of work in Southampton years ago, did a lot of work at Colley and some of the past, you know, boards and select when you were in that building over there. Many meetings over there. I think at that time, a lot of Dave Silverney, I remember the Chief for a quarter while running some projects too, involved with this building here where we got funding to do a feasibility study to make it into town offices. We had a committee that was in place. We used to meet at Nora School. Worked in getting, oh, the tire dump cleanup project years ago. Is that familiar with folks? And then the, I know it was very controversial, I know. Waterline project to, I think it was this elderly housing on College Highway, a couple of fire hydrants. And we also did some housing rehab around the lakes and we did some other work with head on streets and roads and that sort of stuff. So very familiar with the town. So I want to go through just a little background about the ADA, about 521 CMR, about the difference between the two, and then the planned content. Mike's going to go back and then talk about the self-evaluation piece. And then when he's done, I'm going to go in and just do a quick overview of the general findings and then maybe hit upon a couple of things and open up for any kind of questions.
Can I just ask everybody hearing okay back there?
It's hard with this back.
Yeah. Could you maybe just be on the side a little bit?
Yes.
Yeah. Maybe on the corner or outside. Yeah. If that's okay. Then your voice projects a little differently. This room is a little strange sometimes.
I sure brought my megaphone.
And I don't know if you have closed caption on Zoom or not.
Do we have a closed caption? I don't know.
I don't know.
I didn't see anyone who was speaking.
Don't know. May not.
Host tools?
Captions?
Oh, I think you just barely missed. Testing one, two, three?
Okay. Yes. Okay. Beautiful. Okay. Good. Right. Perfect.
So that'll pick me up as well?
Uh, yeah, it should. We're still, we're still working on all the stuff, so it's not fine tuned.
Okay. I'll speak loud. So the ADA Disability Act was signed as law over 35 years ago. It was back in 1990 by President Georgia W. Bush. The ADA is the local rights law. It's intended to be equal access to programs and services regardless of mental or physical impairment. There are five titles under the ADA. Two titles directly relate to municipalities, local jurisdictions. Title one is employment, so equal opportunity employment. And title two is state and local governments accessibility, so access to programs and services. And also that's a requirement of your ADA plan comes into play. The current standards of the ADA are the 2010 standards, went into effect in March of 2012. And there have not been any changes since then. Massachusetts also has its own specialized section of the state building code. It's called 521 CMR. It is a building code. It is not civil rights. So requirements for modifications in buildings is only triggered by construction. And it's basically, it depends upon the value of the work as a percentage of the value of the built. So it's either just the work that's being done must be ADA, accessible compliant, the work, entrance, bathrooms, a couple of things, or the whole building must be brought in compliance. And I have more detail in the plan on how that works. We look at the higher, so in these plans, a lot of compliances out there that do these, they just look at ADA. We look at both ADA and 521 CMR because you're governed by both. And when we do the plans, and I'll get to this later on, how the format is, we look at the higher standard of the two and then that's what we write in that needs to be adhered to when you do your modifications or when you get to those. So the planned content and format. So basically, there's four sections of the plan. There's what we call the front end. I'll get into that in a second. Then there's a self eval piece, which Mike's going to talk about. The transition plan, the individual building, the facility assessments themselves. And then the appendices, which includes any recommended policies, procedures. We have funding sources and we have some other things in there. So the front end piece, we have 10 chapters and we'd like to use that as a reference guide for, you know, town staff or for town elected officials. So you can go into those chapters if things might come up. So for example, we have more information about the ADA and the five titles. We have another chapter on other federal accessibility regulations and contact information. We have a much detailed section on 521 CMR. We go through what the percentages are and how that applies. We have another chapter on alterations to historic properties because there are exceptions on historic properties and what you may, may not have to do. We also have a section or chapter on EV charging station guidance. Now, when the ADA regs went into effect 2010, I mean, EV charging stations, I don't think they even began to be thought of. But there are guidelines or regulations on parking places, parking, on accessible roofs, on reach range. So we have guidance in here in terms of if you put in an EV charging station. I don't think you have any on any of these properties today. Then you need to look at that and that's what you must or you should adhere to. We have another chapter on emergency preparedness for persons with disabilities. So police and fire, if you are looking to do emergency preparedness plan, you can look at the information. It's, I think, three or four or five pages and incorporate some of that because it's very useful and helpful. We have another chapter on ADA service animals versus emotional support animals. And then in terms of what qualifies, actually, point two, it's a working dog, nature, horse, or a service animals. And then what you may or may not be able to do when a situation arises. We have another section, a chapter on ADA compliant portable toilets. We've done 60-some-odd plans all throughout the state from Berkshire to Boston. We've never come across a compliant portable accessible toilet because they don't have adequate clearance on the side, clearance in the front, or things. There are dispensers or over the grab bars and all sorts of stuff. So we have a chapter on that with some photographic examples. We have another chapter on emergency I wash, emergency I wash stations, which would apply to police, fire, and schools in their laboratories. And we do this, we come across things all the time. They say, okay, T's, we should have a chapter on this because then the town can go and look at it. That's what's going to be done. We have another chapter, which I think a lot of municipalities have found very useful, on accessible routes of travel and playground surface materials. So that's specific. We have a number of different types of examples of materials. And then we have in there, I'll just quickly just show you this here. So we have like 11 different examples. And we show, we have pros of that material, the cons, and a rough cost in a photographic example. So if you could look at different options. I want to put a accessible route from parking lot to a ball field. Well, if I want to use stone dust, do I want to use asphalt, concrete? Do I want to do stone dust with an emulsion over it? There's a new material out there. It's a wood chip fiber with an emulsion on it, so it's compacted. So there's all sorts of options and you can use that in the future if you ever make any of those improvements. So I said, Mike's going to go with self eval. We look at, there are only five areas required to look at. We look at 11 different areas. And then I mentioned, I'm going to go with the transition plan assessments and appendices. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike. Mike's going to talk about the self eval piece. Now, it's the piece where we look at your policies, your procedures, your job descriptions, and to make recommendations on things that may need to be improved upon. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Yeah, so Jim had given you an outline of, you know, what's in the plan and I'm boldly assuming that you've all had a chance to review the plan. So the self-evaluation piece, you know, comes right after the front end that Jim was referring to. And then after the self-evaluation, that's when Jim gets into the actual transition plans. This is, you know, the modifications and recommended work to be done to, you know, make the buildings and the rest facilities more accessible. So, you know, we'll start right at the top, you know, regarding commissions on disabilities. So the, you know, town of Southampton, the annual town meeting action should accept the provision of Mass Center Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J, to establish a commission on disability and allow the select board to appoint a minimum of five members to serve on this commission. The next regards the ADA Coordinator. We know who that is. So it's recommended that we post the name and contact information of the ADA Coordinator on the town's website and in the town hall. And that's for, you know, people in town that have a disability or new people that move to town. So they could look up on your website and see who they can contact if they have anything ADA related questions. Next, adopt a public notice of non-discrimination and post it on the town's website and in the town hall. Now, again, in the plan, this is much more detail. I'm kind of giving you folks bullet points. The next would be, you know, to post the ADA grievance procedure on the town's website and in the town hall and make it available to all staff, departments, committees, and boards. And next is to adopt a formal, reasonable accommodation policy and develop a reasonable accommodation request for. and develop a reasonable accommodation request form. And these forms that I'm referring to are actually in the, at the end of the ADA plan under appendices. The next is to incorporate non-discrimination language, essential function requirements, reasonable accommodation language, and physical requirements, and employment postings, and job prescriptions. And what I did, I reviewed maybe ten to twelve job descriptions that were either sent to me or available on Southampton's website. And came up with the suggestions and recommendations that I did. When it comes to effective communication, kudos to the town of Southampton. Because I, you know, we learned that you folks purchased an assistive listening device that can, you know, be used at meetings, such as what we're on now, or annual town meetings, or any other town-related meeting that someone may need some kind of effective communication accommodation. And, you know, these are for folks that, you know, may be hard of hearing or, or actually, you know, deaf and may need the assistance of an American Sign Language interpreter. So what to do there is, you know, to adopt, auxiliar and accommodation request language in all meeting notices. And actually post the availability of assisted living, you know, living, assisted listening systems, devices on the town's webpage. And even in places where you hold, you know, maybe meetings like where the select board usually has their meetings and where you would have your annual town meetings. Then, otherwise, when it comes to emergency preparedness, incorporate the guidance provided in Chapter Seven of the Self-Evaluation Transition Plan when developing an emergency management plan. And more specifically, that notification and assistance to persons with disabilities be included in the emergency management plan. And to say that's one of the many, you know, great documents that are in the front end of the ADA plan. And I believe that covers most everything. So the, yeah, and I know, you know, in speaking with the town clerk, the town of Southampton, it has auto lock, has an auto lock voter assistance terminal that's available for voters with either visual impairments or physical disabilities that, that make them unable to mark the ballot, you know, with their pen or the magic marker. And, you know, so that, the auto lock assistance terminal can help address that through the use of keyboards. So that's, I know it's a very, very abridged summary of the self-evaluation. Like I say, there's much more detail in the actual self-evaluation itself than the final plan. So if there's no questions, I can turn this presentation back over to Jim.
All right, yeah, you're right. There's, we would spend three days going over the details. So this is a real, 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 real quick. I mean, there's so much detail. Report itself, and this is actually one of our smaller ones because about a hundred and eighty-six pages, we've had almost a bunch of four hundred pages of length. So, but, okay, so I want to go and quickly show the format of the plan. And
So wait, yes, can I say, can you do that?
Yeah, you can do that on page sixty-seven. I'm going to look, I'd use the library as an example, but also Oh, there you are, right there. Okay. So what we, each, each building, each facility has its own
Zoom with a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into all the detail, just the format part of it. Scroll up a little bit. All right, right there. So what we'd like to do, and again, each facility has its own separate report. So if, you know, police just wants to complete, and fire just to fire, they can have their own. So anyway, like to have a general description, paragraph, the function description of the facility and the program. So, you know, when was the light, when was the building built? Is it one story, two stories, is it masonry, is it wooden framed? What does it serve? So that's in the first introductory paragraph, a representative photo, who the responsible parties are. And then, we find this very useful, is a general description in narrative format of what the areas are in compliance. Because you don't want to, and you'll see in a few minutes, the detail. You want a quick read of what it is. And you could go, oh, this is great. Or you say, oh my God, we got something to tell. So, so this is a couple, like two and a half pages for the library. Although, then go to the next page, you'll know
Could we just, given that this is not going to be that visible to people listening eventually on this, we just read a couple of the comments that are up there?
Sure.
Like parking, for example, and whatever.
Yeah, okay, parking.
Couple things like that.
Designated parking, designated accessible parking space is wide enough solely for passenger vehicles. The signage is severely faded and is thirteen inches wide. In every report, I'll go, I'll read a couple of specifics on this too.
Sure, okay.
Building signage, entry doors lack tactile designated signage, bathroom signage is located on the door and not the last side of the door. So again, this is a real quick, you can read and see, it's not meant to be, the detail's going to be the next part we go to. Drinking fountain, the drinking fountain near the conference room is low only. Right there, the circulate computer, just, I want to point this out because we did go in there, and this is something where, and we see this a lot in some of the libraries, where this was actually too high for wheelchair user to use the dedicated circulate computer because it was too, again, it's four inches above the floor, not within retrain, there's no knee clearance. And I put this because I had to go back and take some additional photos, which my camera failed. And when I went back, the library was very proud to say, well, we already, we took care of this already. So I took a picture, and it says on there, it's a notice that the accessible dedicated computer is located, and there were some tables adjacent. So, but I felt important that, you know, that we wanted to show that it was already action done on it.
Very good.
So if you go down to then the, page sixty-nine, right there, let's go down a little bit. So then, this is where, this is where the nuts and bolts, this is where your facilities person and others would be interested in what needs to be done. And a lot of folks we work with, we just actually, we finished the Vodlo ADA plan in June. We had a meeting with the Board of Select, and we just had another meeting a couple nights ago with the Disability Commission. And we informed them that some of the, so some of these, we're working with the facilities person for the all-town buildings, and the facilities person for the schools. And they were in the middle of some projects, so we would just take what we had here, lift it, and send it to them, and they just actually use that to set it up to get quotes on because everything was right there in detail. So this is, I'll just use the parking one, for example. So parking, I said before, the designated parking space is only fourteen feet wide, which is wide enough solely for passenger vehicles. The signage is severely faded and is thirteen inches too high. So I have, we have in here the, what the code is, the federal code for ADA, the code under 521 CMR, so you can actually go, you reference those, you can find those online, you can see exactly. But then, we have there what needs to be done. Widen existing space such that the asphalt accessible parking space is sixteen feet wide, eleven-foot parking space with a five-foot axle, or eight-foot parking space with an eight-foot axle. So that can accommodate a van. Restrike the parking space and axle. Provide new signage. Signage must be set, the signage height should be minimum of sixteen inches high at the bottom of the sign, and a maximum of ninety-six inches at the top of the sign. And located no more than ten feet in front of the space. The van accessible space must also be provided. So that's very specific, and if you were, so everything through here that you go along, we have that level of detail. I mean, I'll give you another quick example. So we talk here about building signage, and in the building, a number of doors lacked tactile designated signage. And we cite this federal code, the state code. And then the requirement is, which is a little bit lengthy, for signage, install and relocate accessible compliant signage so it is located on the last side of each door where allowable, with appropriate finish and contrast and character type portions. Raising veil characters should also be included. Under 521 CMR, signage should be sixteen inches AFU above finished floor to the center line of the sign. Tackle characters on the sign should be forty-eight inches minimum AFU above finished floor from base on lowest character, x sixteen inches maximum above finished floor to the base on highest character. Characters must meet the ADA standards for character height, finish, and contrast accompanied by a gray true grail according to section seven oh three ADA standards. And accessible graphism also include the universal symbol of accessibility. So then, three, you know, if you went and want some assault signs, take this. Okay, we need twenty signs in these buildings, and this is what this is going to be this year. So, so we have that, we have, so we also have in here, and this detail piece, we went, we have the description, we have the state federal code, the state code, the action to be taken. We have a priority. We have feasibility and timeframe. Priority is one through four. One, anyone could do it. Let's say there's a protruding object. A protruding object is anything that's more than four inches out into the route of travel at a height of twenty-seven to eighty inches above finished floor. So let's say there was a deep turbulator mounted right here. And that would be a protruding object, because it's going to go probably about eight, nine, ten inches from the wall. So any one of us could maybe take a And now my cane is going to pick up cane detection on that, I'll go around that, that wall. I mean, that's a simple example, but, so if it's something more, let's say you had to relocate it, so your facilities person, that would be priority, that would be feasibility two. If it had to be something more of a construction nature, you had to rebuild a set of stairs, that would be a feasibility three. And if needed, some kind of design and engineering, that'd be feasibility four. Priority, we use priority, one is access into the building, two is goods and services, three is bathrooms, and four is anything else. Then we have a timeframe of immediate, near, or long term. And then we also put a rough cost estimate for each item. Now, one thing that I said, we mentioned the higher standards of the two, ADA, 521 CMR. There also are tolerances that are allowed, and we include the tolerances in these plans. If it's zero to two inches, there's a one-inch tolerance. If it's two to thirty-six inches, it's a half-inch tolerance. If it's more than thirty-six inches, it's an inch tolerance. So let's say the reach range is forty-two inches, I'll be in the bathroom here, so let's say forty-two inches, but it is now forty-two and a half inches that where the item is. We are within a tolerance of a half inch. Because it's more than thirty-six, you've got an inch tolerance. Get the reach range, and obviously if we're dispenser in a bathroom, and the operating mechanism, let's say it's at forty-five inches, and it should be at forty-two, you're three inches high, it's above tolerance, it's going to be brought in compliance. So we have that when we do the report. We don't, I mean, so in our notes, we'll say, okay, it's forty-two and three-quarters inches, it's okay, we're not going to write it up, even though it's with an intolerance. But tolerances do not apply to a range of dimensions or to slopes. Slopes would be for your ramps or for your parking spaces. So two percent max is on parking spaces. If it's two-point-four percent, technically, it's not compliant, we have to note in the report. I mean, are you going to redo it for point-four percent? Probably not, but we just write it up. We typically say it was, well, when you get to repainting the parking lot, you know, in year 2056, you know, make sure it's above. So, but that does apply on running slopes for ramps. If it's, let's say the ramp is eight-point-six percent, and it's concrete, technically, and you max is eight-point-three percent. We'll note, but we'll also say that the benefit gained versus the cost to redo that ramp is not there. And we recommend that it not be changed, and if necessary, secure bearings to retain the existing. However, if it's something like ten-point-eight percent, then that's, that's different, that's involving. I also mentioned on the range of dimensions. So let's say for an adult grab bar in a bathroom, it's thirty-three to thirty-six inches above finished floor at the top of the gripping surface, and that is your tolerance. So technically, the thirty-six and a quarter inches is too high. Well, write it up. I mean, to be honest, that quarter inch, you know, but if it was now, if it was like forty-two inches, yeah, it would, that's really way too high. Or if it's only twenty-eight inches, it's too, it's too long. We address reasonable accommodations in police, fire, and So they must meet certain strict physical requirements for the position. So in those areas, most areas like the garage are not open to the public. So we know, we do it right in narrative, but we say unless these areas are made open to the public, or unless this reasonable combination, perhaps you don't take action in those areas, which are work areas only. However, work areas which don't require certain physical requirements for the position, such as an employee break room, those are governed under ADA. They're not governed by 521 CMR, but they are under ADA. So you do have some areas here, if there's a break room, and the sink counter is thirty-six inches, and there's no knee clearance for the sink, that's technically not compliant. These have knee clearance, and these would be no more than thirty-four inches. So that would have to be modified because someone could be a wheelchair user, have an office job, and they grant, they can't access the sink. And one other thing, this is other involved, and I'll get this, I'm going to move along after this. So schools are problematic. The standard is very different between 521 CMR and ADA. One is age level, one is grade level. Also, the standards aren't the same between the two. And then the standard is different between pre-K, K to three, four to six, and seven to twelve. So when you're like a Norris school, which I'll, a little bit, I'll talk about that briefly, is pre-K to six. So individual classrooms, it supposedly applies to, a lot of it applies in the bathrooms. So if it's a pre-K classroom with a pre-K bathroom, it must be pre-K standards. If it's a K bathroom and a K classroom, it must be K standards. But what have you got to hog with, and it serves the whole school, which is pre-K to six? So what we do is, there are common standards. But we've developed this phrase, common standard. So I'll just use a grab bar. So a grab bar for grades K through three, I believe, is twenty inches to twenty-five inches above finished floor. A grab bar for four to six, I believe, is twenty-five to twenty-seven inches. So we say, so the overlap, I'm sorry, overlap standard. So the overlap there is twenty-five inches. So if you set that grab bar at twenty-five inches, now you can meet both K to three and four to six. So we write it up, you know, through the report, we have that addressing the, at Norris Elementary for those type of circumstances. All right, I'm going to go real quick.
Jim, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
On Norris for a second. So what do you do like with common areas, like the library, or the cafeteria, or the gym? Do they have specific, different kind of qualifications?
Yeah, so it depends upon the user. So if it's a user, if it's an adult user, it's the adult standard. If it's intended to be for a child, then it's a child standard. So there are certain, and so one thing, boys, have to pull this up here. So in the narrative portion, we have guidance. So here's a guidance on reach range in the classroom. Here's a guidance on, and we'll talk about this in a second. Classroom seats with bubblers, and it goes in quite length because it gets pretty complicated on the state and federal standards. So if it is intended to be a reach range for a child, it's going to be different than it is for an adult. So it depends upon what the intention is.
You've got to accommodate both in the common area.
Yeah, we try to accommodate. And that's where it gets kind of tough. We're using a judgment call, following the standard in terms of, okay, who is a serving and what's the best way to address the service, most focused, where they're supposed to serve. So general, these are just general findings of non-compliance. And I will go, I'll go quickly. So parking, in some cases, there is no designated accessible parking. The signage was too low or was too high, and the running slope exceeded two percent, or there was no van accessible spaces. Some cases, the external travel to building entrances had abrupt change in level service of greater than one-quarter inch unbellled, or bellled greater than one-half inch. So they don't think that means a lot, but that one-half inch, if you're a wheelchair side appearance, if that's a bit of a tripping hazard, or it's a little bit of obstruction with your chair. Doors, so the maximum operating force for an entry door is five pounds, fifteen pounds for an exterior, and closing speeds at least six seconds. And we see this all the time, and you're using these doors, and I mean, they're, they're out of whack. I mean, they close I mean, they close too fast, they're too heavy. So that's, that's very common that they just need to be adjusted and looked at, especially those ones that are used quite often. Stair railings were typically not rounded oval in shape, and they lack top and bottom extensions. 12 inches parallel to the ground at the top, the slope distance of one tread, and then 12 inches parallel to the ground or floor at the bottom. Some of the stair railings are not at the correct height. The police, I know the front is not used, but if we're ready to be used, a police ramp, the running slopes are 8.8 to 9.4%. They're quite excessive. And the railings were not rounded oval in shape, and they weren't paired. There's a little section of, when you go from the parking to the library, there's about a six-foot section of concrete that is sloped at 6.1 to 7.8%. A walkway, a walkway is up to 5.0%. 5.0% to 8.3% is not considered to be a ramp. So 6.1 to 7.8% is a ramp. So it either needs to be, it's in the report, either modified so it's at 5% or less, or railings for that six-foot segment, which unfortunately railings are expensive. In many of the buildings, we found non-compliant hardware, knob hardware. It must be lever style, so it's operably enclosed, fist or loose grip, so I can just do that. I don't do this and pinch and twist. Lack of tactile designation signage, I mentioned before, improper height or has been a latteside of the door. I mentioned about reach range, things being too high. So reach range in a bathroom for dispensers is 48, actually it's 42 inches. And under 521 CMR, in hallways and common areas and rooms like this, it's 48 inches. I don't know why, but that's what we know. It's gonna be changed, I think. So that'd be like light switches, defibrillators. A lot of the shore holders were too high. The folks couldn't actually create access to the shores because they're up to 70 inches high. Again, I mentioned about the office and staff sinks being too high and lacking a knee clearance. And in some cases, a couple of the buildings, the faucets were required of pitching and twisting. They weren't lever style. You'd have to go like this. Doors with glass panes, I think this building was okay, but in the school. So under the ADA, they have a little nuance with doors with glass panes. There can be no more than 43 inches above finished floor. So if, again, if I'm in a chair, I can also see through that visually, like you or I can. If it's up too high, then, you know, I don't have that visual. Most of the drinking fountains were not high-low. And then the low, if there was just a low fountain, they didn't have the proper knee height clearance, at least 27 inches. We have protruding objects, I mentioned that, that 27, 80 inches. So it was eight defibrillators. There was some signage. I forget which building that was in the signage. Off topic, I can't recall. In the school, there was a trophy case, a couple of trophy cases that were protruding objects. So again, visually impaired, I might walk into that and injure myself to some degree. A number of tables and desks lacked knee clearance, and this was throughout buildings looked at. Again, doorway thresholds having that abrupt change of level surface. And then a lot of areas, the lack of compliant clear width and also abrupt changes within. I mean, obviously, excuse me, obviously fire. If it's, you can't get into the building, you can't get up into the back, you know that. Police, same thing. You can't once you're in, you can't go anywhere, nothing, no exception route of travel there. And the library has an issue with some of the stacks and some of the furniture placement as well. Needed a 36-inch clear width, a route of travel. You need, they have no abrupt changes on the accessible roof. Very long. Bathroom. So I mentioned about codex being too high, 48 inches max. Dispenses being too high, 42 inches for adults. In many cases, the sink piping wasn't wrapped, guarded, or insulated. I mentioned about grab bars being too high or too low, the 33 to 36 inches. Toilet paper dispensers, this is for adults. Must be no more than seven inches to nine inches in front of the toilet, the water closet. So in many cases, they were too far. So, you know, I gotta reach and I can't get to it. Or maybe it's behind the toilet. I gotta kinda get like this. It's gotta be that area, like I mentioned. And in many cases, the water closet flush controls were on the wall side, not the wide or the approach side. And then there were inadequate clearances. You need 18 inches on center from the near wall to the water closet, 42 inches to the firewall, and 40 inches to the front. So you get adequate wheelchair maneuverability and the ability to transfer to those toilets. And again, I'm pretty, but it's all very detailed, specifically in the report itself. Rec areas and it's Norris Elementary, Conant Park, the brief field in Town Hallman. Again, in general, the lack of accessible route of travel fully to and around within the facilities. Lack of level, lack of levels area for level areas for a wheelchair at the benches and bleacher seating. Some picking tables didn't typically meet knee height and depth, although I think at La Bree, the ones at the playground there did. Another little nuance for ADA, chain link gates, and I think this was at the elementary school. They must be smooth at the, from ground floor to 10 inches up on the push side of the gate. And again, we assume the rationale is that if you are in a wheelchair and you're using your chair to push the gate open, you don't want anything to be caught on the chain link piece or whatever that's there. I mentioned about portable toilets not being accessible. So playgrounds, there is, do you have a source for accessible ones? To be honest, we got a spec, never saw one. We've got a photographic example of one in here, what it should be. But there's one we saw.
No business.
God, I forget which community, and it was close, close. But, you know, you see here, you see the, see the space. You've got adequate space. It's much bigger than the ones you see. And there's two versions. This one, probably closer to see it there, it's page 23. Two different variations. This is more linear. And this is another here, with this, with a lot of these ones, you find the operating mechanisms are such that they're difficult and they're, when they're placed with the locking mix, and so you really can't, you gotta twist it. And these are the better locking mixes. We've seen a lot of problems with those as well. What was it here? Playground, okay. So there's no equipment accessible at Conant or Norris. There was limited accessible equipment. I'm sorry to say it, at La Bree with the.
Natty's.
Natty's. There was a ramp. There's really nothing up there. And there was, there were some ground components, but the ground components weren't on an accessible roof. And there were two swings which were, which were totally inaccessible, except to be, but they weren't on accessible roof. It was all wood chips.
23.
Wood chips are not an accessible roof because if you're in a wheelchair, if you're in arm braces, if you're in whatever, there's just too much drag and there's no friction, and you're just not stable. So. Let's see. And then, oh, the gazebo here. So obviously, you know, there's no accessible route of travel into the gazebo. It's stairs only. The nosings aren't beveled. Railings are too low, they're not round and oval, they're too wide, and lack top and bottom extensions. That's just a quick overview on the rec areas. Last one, Norris Elementary School. Couple of just key things to point out. The lift of the stage is not in service, in service. I forget the gentleman's name. Who was the head maintenance officer of these guys?
Tom.
Tom. Was it Tom?
Tom, Tom, yes, Tom. Yeah, he was great. He was great. The parts, they can't get the parts for it. So that's an issue because you need to have access to the stage. There were no accessible hallway lockers. Everything was too high and not designated. The cat through stage has rises that are too high. Paper towel dispensers throughout the building all required pitching and twisting. They're not ever lever style, and that's, that's an issue. Even without the riders, it's an issue. I'm trying to turn those things. Adult bathrooms have numerous areas not compliant. There's a lot of information on the bathrooms here. It's probably multiple, multiple pages, probably 10 pages or more in very detail of what the areas are. And the same thing with the bathrooms for the students. They just don't meet the standards. It was a mix, mission Nash, mix and Nash, mission Nash, whatever you wanna call it, of standards. In some cases, you have adult standards mixed in with children's standards. So that you might have a toilet which was set for a child, but then the grab bar is set for an adult. And, you know, it's like monkey bars or grab bars trying to get off and off of the toilet. So. But very detailed in the report, we'll seal that. The other thing which to point out, which we see this unfortunately way too much in brand-new school buildings. Recently constructed within two years or recently constructed within six months. Classroom sinks with bubblers. So the same standards apply to those bubblers as it would be a drinking fountain. So the maximum setback on a bubbler, and if this, we see this here, let's say this is the sink. Is five inches. And then three inches, but it's also setback. So the water flow is, there's no more than three inches to the front. And what was in Norris as well, 99% of the ones we see, is there's a stainless steel cutout, which you buy, it's all pre-done, and this is setback perfectly at five inches, and you get the water flow there. Unfortunately, when it's installed, it's installed at, in the case in Norris, seven to nine inches back from the leading edge. So it's no longer five inches, which with that stainless, if it was, if it was cut out right to the leading edge of that frame, you'd be fine. It's setback another four or five inches. So now it's 79 inches back, and it's not usable for a choke, for a person in a wheelchair. And even, I mean, me there, you know, and Mike, you know, tried, Mike's being an adult, obviously, couldn't, couldn't get to, it's just set so far back, it's 79 inches. So, you know, we have that in the report, and there's a couple options on how to address that or not address it. So that's, you know, a quick overview in summary. To say, I know it seems like a lot, but you're not unlike any other community. You have this plan now in place that offers protection on the federal level because you have a plan, and it's intended that as the jurisdiction has the funds to do so, you try to build a city capital plan a little bit at a time. It also opens you up to be eligible for other sources of funding to make these improvements. The next round of MOD grants for the actual physical, you can, physical improvements. I think the next funding round is June, is June of 2026. So you can apply for, I don't know, whatever. Let's say you wanna apply for signage. You wanna play to replace some bubblers or whatever, drinking fountains. Also, CDVG funds are eligible for ADA disability type improvements. And there might be some other sources out there as well. So that's, you know, it gives you that, and it also gives you that you've done the effort to at least recognize and try to move forward as best as you can. Retail folks are the things that would most affect, which buildings get the most use and that would affect the most individuals. Typically, for communities, it's your municipal office building, your library, might be a rec area if it's actively used. So those are things, you know, not as much, so much would be your highway garage or your water department building or your, even your fire, you know, although fires needed because, but, you know, anyway. So that is in a relative quick nutshell.
Great. Does Mike have any more to tell us here, or are we all set?
Mike, you set?
I am, yes. Thank you.
Very good. Wow, well.
So, I'm sorry. I don't think we have given you the hard copy. I think you do.
We're in a virtual so far.
Okay. So what we typically ask, I don't know if you posted this on the website.
It's on the website.
Okay. So, you know, if you wanted to give it a week or two, a few folks more, then make sure there are any other little changes, modifications, we can make them. And then, so we don't print out the plans and then have to go and do it again. Give it a couple weeks and maybe by the first of the year or so. Let us know if you're all good, and then we can just print out the plans and get them, get them over to you. I'd probably just drop them off. I'm so close to person. Chief it in, mail.
That's fine, yeah. Great. Well, comments, your thoughts from select board people here to start with? I'll just start out and just say, this has been an incredible amount of work, and thank you for doing it, both Jim and Mike. I think this has been long overdue, given the ADA Act and so forth. It's been in, in, in force. Maybe not totally in Southampton, but it's been in place anyway federally and statewide with the CMR for more than 20 years now. So this is long overdue, and I think it really does open our eyes to certain things. It looks as, you know, I've tried to go through it as best I can, and I definitely need another read on it. But I highlighted a few things, and I think there are certain things, as you said, that are fairly easy fixes. Some of the policy things and posting things are not hard to do, getting stuff on the website. We've tried to be very accessible also on the website when we created this website a couple of years ago. And I noted there were comments about PDF is good, but it should also be HTML. So we've been intentionally putting everything on PDF because we were under the impression that was the way that that was gonna be more accessible. But it's not manipulatable, yeah, for anybody else that needs to do it. So we'll take a look at that. But other things that are in here are, some of them might be easy fixes, like a couple of inches of a movement of a, of a paper towel dispenser or something like that. There's other ones that are obviously gonna take time and thought on that. One I appreciate a lot is with the recreation areas though, because we do have two things happening. Well, two actually. So with the old town hall, the former police station, or current police station, sorry, former town hall. We actually have a grant from the Brunton Historical Group to actually redo the pointing of the mortar on the town hall. And part of that process though is taking off that ADA ramp that is not compliant at all. So that ramp is gonna be gone, and that's happening by the spring. And then we have a grant just recently through the park program to put in an accessible walkway in Conant Park from the library out to Route 10. So that will be probably as stone dust as what we're thinking.
Yeah, look at that chapter.
Exactly. So there's some things that are immediately relevant to a couple of projects that we have ready to go, which is great. So thank you for all that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Very impressed with a super technical summary. We should go out for a beer. There are a lot of things.
Beer by.
There are a lot of things to share.
Your tape measure must be like.
My what?
Your tape measure must be like, just like glued to your hand.
I've got, I've got so many tape measures. And so many cameras too. And a computer, I have my new computer, the camera. So I was gonna say, Mike and I, we're available. I mean, so if there are any comments, questions, and we still get from, we did Southampton, not Southampton, Southborough, I think it was five years ago. Facility guy still calls us, you know, on the phone. And I said, I'm not gonna drive out to Southbury, but, you know, take a photo, describe what you need, you know, and we'll get back to you. And the same thing, I mean, I mean, it's not far from me, but it was from Mike from Millbury. But it was close by, you know, because Mike does a lot of stuff in his neck of the woods where he's had a go like to, oh, I think up to Oxbridge and others, because he lives in Millbury. But here, if in the area which we are working, we'll be working here or somewhat, you know, if a quick something to look at. Or take a photo, or whatever it is, a spec, shoot it off in an email, we look at it, we can get back to you. And we just do it. I mean, no charges. We just do that. Just give advice and.
That's great. Good, yeah. No, that's very good. I think, just out of curiosity, I don't know how many other small towns, especially here in Western Mass, have done this self-survey. If we're, are we one of the early ones, or are we late to the game, or?
Well, we've done, I can't remember them all. We've done close to 60. So I'm trying to think, the ones around here, and my memory is getting older, is getting worse and worse. So. So I know, we've done, well, not necessarily right here, small towns. Petersham, New Marlborough, Hadley, Ware, Warren, Wales. Southwood's bigger, Palmer, Palmer's bigger. Brook, Brookfield. Now we go into Central Mass, and there's a lot out there.
No, that's, I was just curious. And then what, I guess what I'm leading into is that, you know, being a small town and having budget constraints as we do, how have you found, I mean, how long do, I don't know if that's the right question. How many years does it take for most towns to actually try to implement some of this stuff?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Do you ever get finished? I mean, is the question, I guess maybe.
So I'm gonna give an unfortunate answer in some cases. Some cases, some communities are very good, and they try to do what they can do. And Mike and I have gone back and redone some plans that were done, maybe, that we did 10 or 12 years ago. And now they've gotten old, and they wanna, you know, they cannot consider it to be current anymore. And we've done maybe two or three or four of those. Nothing has changed. They haven't done anything. No. So it's, you know, some towns do, and it's great, and some towns just show it.
Is there any kind of a reporting requirement, like some, some plans have, like every couple of years, you need to update it? Or you need to file an annual report about what you have done? Is there any requirement like that for this?
So you, oh. Not, no. Typically, it should be filed with the town clerk. So it's kept somewhere on file, obviously administrator's office. So there are entities out there that will require you to have a current plan, like 10 years is what's kind of. So there are entities out there that will require you to have a current plan, like ten years is what's kind of the assumption of what's current. So if you're going to go for an open space and rec plan, um, certified by the state, they want to have, ensure that you, and some municipalities just do their, their rec areas have it done with a checklist, which doesn't do justice, but, um, it gets it, it gets it, um, approved by the state. But the state wants to have an ADA plan, at least for the rec areas done. And if you're going to, I think, what the, what the open space rec plans.
We didn't have it.
Ten years, I think it was what?
Uh, I think it was like seven years and we just had it extended, actually, it goes to twenty thirty-one now.
Okay, all right, so twenty thirty-one, um, you need to have your current, you know, ADA, or at least things, you know, deemed to be current. There are some federal funding sources which you might not be able to form, maybe at the best rate. USDA, if you're going to go for funding for a public safety complex, um, if you had water sewer. We, towns, we've had to do the plan because they could not get the financing until they had their ADA plan in place. Similarly for, you cannot apply for CD, CD, you know.
CDVG.
CDVG funds, um, you can't apply for ADA-related work, barrier rule work, unless you have the plan. But if you apply for CDVG funds and you don't have an ADA plan, the state's going to require you to have one done within the next five years. So I mean, there's a lot of these, you know, you really intend to have it there and current and that sort of thing.
That's probably the same with the Office on Disability as well, that you could have some level of a plan. I mean, that's, that's what we found, I think, with a lot of the grants, is that you need some level of a plan in place in order to be eligible for some of these grants.
So you could, you can apply next year for physical improvements through the MOD grants. Because you have the plan, but if you didn't have the plan, you couldn't do that, you got to apply to the plan first. You may want to even just send your plan off to MOD, to the MOD, uh, have it on file.
That would be good. Super, okay, good. Any thoughts, comments, all right? If not, we thank you both very much for both of the work you did coming out here and making use of all your, your knowledge and your measurements and, uh, taking a tour of every building here in town that needed to be looked at and our open space as well. So thank you very much for getting this done and for coming in tonight and being, being remote, Mike. Thank you for joining us and, uh, much appreciate it.
Oh, very much my pleasure and again, thanks for having us. And Jim's right, uh, you know, if questions come up, uh, we're available. And Jim's right, we've, uh, five years or more later, we still will hear from, uh, towns that we've worked with before, so, uh, so, uh, hey, uh, have a great holidays and have a good rest of your meeting.
Good, thank you very much, all right.
Take care, Mike.
All right, thanks.
All right, you too.
All right, good, well, we'll continue with our regular business, thank you, I appreciate it.
Wayland?
Wayland, yes.
And the origins of all of this back in the fifties and sixties. So maybe you want to cup coffee.
All right, so let's move on to other business that we've got. Let's, um, for a second, we'll let you get situated here, we'll tune into the Town Administrator's Report. Uh, you might need to look down the link.
Oh, there's not much really to report on between Thanksgiving and special town meeting. Really public, but, um, one of the big things that did come up last week was, uh, our bidding for, um, our first major project under the Southampton Housing Authority. And, uh, we had one bidder, um, and that was open and this is for the property over at three thirty, three fifty-four. Three fifty-four College Highway. So we will be moving forward with that.
Okay, so we have one bidder on that and that's the winning bid.
Yeah, uh, yeah, RFP, yeah.
So do we?
Did we formally accept it or?
No, that'll be on the seventeenth with the Housing Authority meeting.
Oh, nice, okay, very good.
I get a vote from them.
Okay, that sounds good, all right, good to hear on that one, all right, good. All right, and we'll get down to other things, I don't know what's happening, uh, if we have this on the agenda, maybe we don't. Just give us a little update in terms of, um, how things are going with, uh, anything else? I know you mentioned that, uh, we were working on the tax recap, we were talking about that, just to give us a heads up in terms of where that is.
Um, probably just do it offline.
Okay, all right, we're, we're still working on it, we don't have the actual tax rate yet, okay, perfect. All right, uh, nothing else, how about any select board liaison reports? Anybody had a meeting lately over the last week or two of anything?
I see it further down on the agenda, so.
Okay, all right, yeah, I think they'll, just keep an eye on, on things coming up. I know there are some getting scheduled, I've seen a couple of things on my town code that gets scheduled, so. And just keep an eye on your, your liaison committees, um, and I know there's both, I think Board of Health and then the assessors and a few others like that coming up, okay? Nothing, uh, I think on my end either, we have a, we may, we're trying to get a grant meeting organized and maybe a master plan meeting organized, uh, in the next couple of weeks, but we haven't got anything totally set yet. But we'll be working on that, okay? So let's go into new business, we have a couple of things here. Um, this is picking up from something that we were going to act on last time and we didn't, because we didn't have the information. This is for a, an adjustment to our plumbing and gas fees. Uh, this is coming to us from the building department and I guess maybe the summary page, Scott, um, somewhere. Is that up in there? There we go. So basically just because I don't know how easy it is for people to see this when it's being recorded, but. So this is basically a summary for recommended updates for the town's plumbing and gas permit fees. Current fee structures remain largely unchanged since two thousand fifteen. While operational training and regulatory costs have steadily increased, the proposed, uh, updates, the, um, aligns the inspection fees with the actual service costs and brings the plumbing and gas fees in line with adjustments already made to the electrical fees last year. So the plumbing fee has not been adjusted in ten years and, uh, that was the first one here, so. I think, um, I don't know how we want to handle this, just to give the summary here.
Well, this is what I asked for at the last meeting. And I think it's wonderful, it's beyond, uh, my expectations. It's, um, clear as to what the current fee is, the proposed fee, all these things, what you get for your money. And the overview really explains how we got here. So I'm completely satisfied that this is a reasonable and maybe in a percentage sense, a large increase, but, um, reflects reality at this time, so, um, I'm yes vote on this.
I think, I think basically the, um, the fees have gone, the basic inspection fee, I think, is from sixty to eighty dollars is the way I'm seeing this. Um, and then some of these other fees, uh, it includes, like this first one's new residential one for plumbing, includes four inspections and all the fixtures, so it's an eighty dollar increase. So basically, these are about a thirty percent increase all the way through. But again, they have not been adjusted in more than ten years, um, in some cases. So they seem fairly reasonable, I think, from what we've seen in the adjustments.
I don't think it's slowed down growth.
Yeah, hopefully not. And I think, uh, the gas fees follow very similarly as well, uh, in terms of that adjustment all the way across. So I think what we'd end up doing is on the, uh, probably on the building department page, these fees would show up, um, they're like the electrical fees do now, and we'd get this so that people can see why, you know, what they get for it. So this, the notes and so forth.
And also updating to our online permitting.
Yes, okay.
Which I would encourage people to use.
Good, yeah, what, online permitting, so all of these are able to be done online?
So far, the last one, last major department, we're just waiting on health, but fire, um, fire's all set, building's all set, um, health is all set, you just have to get the link on. And town clerk is pretty much all set, it's just a timing issue. And then the last one, last pieces will be highway. And then, um, planning in Conca.
Planning in Conca.
Okay, good. So, and are we finding people using the, uh, online permitting pretty much?
Uh, I haven't looked at the stats yet, yeah.
Be good, so we do have that.
It's a little bit too new to roll out, so I don't want to roll out of just two departments, but.
But a couple are at least starting to get it set up anyway, at least, that's good. Okay, so I think if, if nobody has any other questions about this, um, it looks like it's related to, you know, all the costs that have been involved for transportation, certification, insurance, all the administrative support that goes along with this. It's mentioned here that state mandated training and licensing for inspectors has expanded and basically the current fees no longer cover, cover the cost delivery that we have. So I would take a motion to act upon the building department's recommendation.
I'll make the motion to approve the, um, approve the plumbing and gas permit fees at that line.
Sorry.
All right, all right, if no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so yeah, that's approved and we will get that notified to the building commissioner and get it up on your, on the website, on their webpage as well. Very good, okay, um, special town meeting, wrap up. You had the special town meeting, Scott, you want to say a couple of words?
Um, well, I, I, I think it was a, uh, it was the first town meeting that we've had on a Saturday, special town meeting, I believe, for a while, so, and given the, uh, you know, given the subject matter, which was kind of dry, to be honest, a lot of just financial, and it was a snowy Saturday morning in the middle of December, I actually thought our attendance was, uh, pretty good. We had a hundred and fifteen people attended and when you look at the averages, the average attendance for a special town meeting is a hundred and eighteen. We've had, over the last eleven years, we have some as low as sixty-six, uh, sixty-six. Lucy actually provided me the statistics here. Sixty-six, seventy-eight, seventy-six, one oh-two, one thirteen, one forty-seven.
What year, Scott?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't have time to look here. These are, uh, the newest to the oldest. Uh, this one was obviously the big one for the, um, public safety complex. Uh, no, I'm sorry, the land purchase was a special town meeting, so, um, yeah, we were definitely on average, but we're doing a lot more to try to encourage, um, participation in town meetings, changing it to Saturdays. Uh, the other thing that I'm working on for annual town meeting, uh, would be a daycare option for people, so if they have kids, um, that they could be able to attend town meeting and have them, uh, be watched, um, by some of our volunteers, so.
That would be great.
No guarantee, but we're, we're working on it.
That's, that would be a great idea. And I think one thing, just to, just to respond to a couple of comments, I know that we've heard that we had tried very hard to do the code red, um, you know, we do agree that, you know, it is primarily used for emergencies, but we have made a decision to go ahead with at least using it for special town and annual town meetings, but we happen hit a time where whatever happened, it was out nationwide, from what I'm understanding, it wasn't just us. So we were unable to get code red information out, um, to let people know. So people, you know, had to have been relying on various information that had been put out. We, you know, we started talking about this in October at every select board meeting. You know, it's, we'd had an article in the newspaper, it had been posted out in front of the, uh, the signboard in front of the town hall. So various ways, we've tried to get the word out and we'll keep on trying more. Uh, we're trying to get it out as best we can through various newsletters in town and however we can do that. So we'll keep on going, but the May town meeting is one that's pretty much a set date. I believe it's May nineteenth, annual town meeting, uh, oh, sorry, that's the town election, sorry. So it's got to be May, early, early May, right?
Look it up.
Let me look that up, now that I just said that, uh, let me look that up and not.
Look it up at townofsouthampton.org. Anybody with a computer or a phone should be able to get it there. And if you have comments about how it could be better arranged, send them, but I find an endless set of resources online. I'm constantly finding stuff that is important, relevant and perhaps forgotten. But it is available to anyone with laptop, computer or phone.
Right, yeah, Robert.
I'd like to share some, so Robert Fuller, College Highway, town moderator speaking. I'd like to share some thoughts, three aspects of the meeting. I was thrilled, that is democracy in action, on pro and con, there were beautiful presentations and, uh, the deputy moderator did a fantastic job. I sat near the mic and for forty-five minutes, I was right there feeling the energy of each person coming up to the mic. That was a highlight, I was very proud. The, um, and I think it signifies too, it's the quality of the presentation, not the quantity of the numbers of the people who come to the meeting. And the second aspect I'd like to address is the maintenance failed, uh, on two aspects at the school. One is no one was there to open up the room for wifi, so people were not able to see it live, that's terrible. The second one is there wasn't enough rows, people sat in those little kiddie, um, tables and hurting their back with no backrest. And after the second article, there were at least twenty people left in rows. And because of that, I've had a lot of feedback on that, so that was unfortunate. A third one is on the vote, uh, there is no, um, no recount, that's only for an election. If somebody, if the moderator has his vote challenged, the vote count challenged by a voice vote, then he can have a show of cards, and if that's challenged, then we can have a count. But we had two people actually counting at each section, so, and then all those people left, so even if we did have a recount, it wouldn't have been the same number of people involved, could have been different, so. Those were my three aspects.
Good, yeah, and definitely wifi and more seating if we can do that. That would be definitely a couple of things to watch out for. Good, all right, you have nothing else? We got through it, just a reminder, the, um, anything that we did related to bylaws, um, the town clerk, when she finishes her meeting minutes, which should be sometime this week.
This afternoon.
Oh, was it, okay, um, then she sends off the, um, and the bylaw and the vote information and the town meeting minutes to the attorney general's office. And usually the attorney general takes about ninety days to go over the, um, the vote on that before the, um, before the bylaw can be effective.
I think we waited substantially longer last time.
We did, there were, but there were, there were documents that they felt were missing, so that was part of the problem for that, so. Okay, um, next up, um, just briefly, a two-fiftieth anniversary. We're, we're winding down, guys, believe it or not, the year is coming to an end. We had a meeting last night of the anniversary committee and we were all kind of like, my gosh. We, we were here a year ago and it's hard to believe that a whole year's gone by. But, um, the main thing is the, uh, tree lighting and Santa arrival will be this coming Saturday. Uh, we're going to gather here at the gazebo about five o'clock. We'll have some cookies and maybe some cocoa, uh, and some music. And then Santa will be arriving, courtesy of the fire department, with the fire trucks at around five thirty and we'll get the tree lit and then Santa will go over to the fire station with the kids and, uh, listen to their, their requests. And then, um, we are working on a bonfire to celebrate the end of this two-hundred-and-fiftieth year. And at this point in time, that's going to be at Conant Park, most likely on the pavilion side, so parking in on the library side. Uh, and that will be New Year's Eve and we're looking at that probably starting at about four o'clock because we want to make the announcements for the winners of the holiday decorating contest and the scavenger hunt at that point in time. And the bonfire then to start probably, probably about five o'clock, right after it gets dark. Uh, we'd light up the bonfire and we're planning on having the, um, the church bells ring us out two-hundred-and-fifty times as well. So that's kind of the plan. The holiday decorating contest is going well. We'll get another updated list of where they are being considered. There's, uh, eighteen, I believe Lucy told me, that have entered into the contest. And so we, we put out a brief list of streets where they're located, but we'll update that as we get a couple more. So on this weekend, we'll update that list. And then, um, the scavenger hunt is also happening. We've uncovered all the, all the hidden areas that were buried by snow, so you can get to the eight points on the scavenger hunt.
Does that happen at a particular time?
Scavenger hunt is anytime throughout the month, so.
And you get information about it where?
Uh, you get the map at the town clerk's office with the instructions and the, and the map itself, the map and the, um, the eight points itself, yeah. Okay, so we're, we're winding down, but we're getting there and thank you to everybody that's been participating in it. I think we've had a great, great year with lots of different activities and, um, I think we'll all be glad to kind of retire this year.
Decorate your house?
Uh, no, probably not, not much. I have a tree, but I won't say, I'm not entering the contest, no, no. So anyway, um.
We're not all the people.
Good, that's true. And we will have prizes, uh, so we, you know, we will have some nice prizes for the first, second and third place winners on the holiday decorating and then, um, we will probably, uh, be doing some sort of a raffle for New Year's Eve as well. So we'll, we'll work out some of those things. And we do have merchandise available. And we do have merchandise available, so still come, come grab your pint glasses, your camper mugs, your wine glasses, we have some of those left, so don't hesitate for a nice Christmas presents. Okay, other than that, any other business, I can't wait until our next regular meeting, which will be Tuesday, December twenty-three, not knowing of any, offhand, alright, so we do have a whole slew, this is the time of year where we renew all of our licenses and permits, and my fellow colleagues, please do not leave tonight until we sign all of these, so we have licenses and permits for alcohol licenses and then common victualer licenses, so.
Madam Chair.
Please.
If you would entertain one motion for alcohol and other annual license renewals, I'll read the roster.
Please.
Now, these are annual license renewals for Camp Jean, alcohol, entertainment, and coin op devices, Pazano's Restaurant and Pub, alcohol, common victualer, entertainment, and coin op devices, Southampton Country Club, alcohol, common victualer, entertainment, and coin op devices. Have laundry? Tin Can Alley Lounge, alcohol, common victualer, entertainment, coin op devices, and Bowling Alley, West Lake Gourmet, alcohol, common victualer, Pure Food Market, alcohol, common victualer, Glendale Ridge Vineyard, alcohol, common victualer, entertainment, County Liquor, alcohol, Smitty's Package Store, alcohol, Southampton Beer and Wine, alcohol.
Okay, we have a second, please.
Second then.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, and just to note, folks, people have to put in a significant amount of paperwork that they submit into Judy, our assistant to Scott, and she gathers all this paperwork for the state, but they have to provide a whole lot of information and obviously make their payment, so I think we've got just about everybody in, we have maybe one or two missing at the most, and we'll pick them up at a next meeting if we are indeed missing anybody. Next one is the common victualer license renewals, yeah, want to read those out?
We have a read-off list, for the common victualer license renewals, we have Anytime Nutrition, Viscusta Orchards, Big Wine, Cumberland Farms, Dunkin' Donuts, Good Eats To Go, Sheldon's Ice Cream, Sit and Spin Laundromat and Cafe, Subway, and Walgreens.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, those are all approved, so we will sign all of those tonight, so this gets everybody licensed for another year until this time next year. Again, they have to go through a pretty strenuous process with paperwork for Judy, and thanks everybody for getting them in on time as she had required.
We're here, we like our local businesses.
Yes, indeed, so, thank you.
Want them to thrive.
Indeed.
Madam Chair, if you would accept a motion to approve three sets of minutes, those from October eighth, October twenty-eighth, and November twenty-fifth in the year 2025, thank you for getting them out to us, I reviewed them, I have no evidence.
Okay, alright.
But maybe there's a second to it.
I want to do them as well, I'll second all of them.
Alright, okay, good, thanks, yeah, okay, so then, all in favor of approving these three sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, motion's approved for October eighth, October twenty-eighth, and November twenty-fifth minutes, thank you. Alright, old pending business, maybe just an update, Scott, on the, main thing is just on the FY twenty-four audit, how we're doing on that, offhand?
So, our auditors were here yesterday and today, doing the field work, Megan's been diligently getting out the documents, as well as Bradley and Dave doing a few other things, probably about fifty percent on, on the way there, so we will, hopefully in the next month or two, we'll be able to wrap it up, get the management letter squared away.
That's great.
We'll be, a little bit, we'll be almost fully caught up for everything for all of our audits, so.
Good.
Wait, 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 we still have FY twenty-five.
Right, well, that, that's supposed to be for this year. We'll just be late for FY twenty-five, basically.
So twenty-four, we, so they've got a little bit more field work to do here?
No, they're all done with it.
They're done with field work, okay, great, good, good to know, okay.
Is there a simple explanation about how indirect costs are, in theory, applied to enterprise accounts or in particular, because there is some continuing confusion?
No, we use the DLS standard, what's charged to indirect costs for all of our enterprise ones, Division Local Services publishes a pretty straightforward manual on that, in the past, we, it was more of a guesstimate, but the last two years, we've gone by what the best practices are, okay?
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry.
Any else here?
It's, let's see, it's complicated and I don't really understand it all that well.
Okay, we can talk it up in another, another meeting if you want to, okay, I don't think we have any updates on anything yet, we, we definitely have, just, these were put out as, as holding patterns, and we've obviously got a few other items that we just wanna not lose track of, or to-do items on our, on our list, namely, this approved investor role is one, but there's other things that we wanna do, and I know, Scott, maybe just a quick question, what are we talking about in terms of budget call, you've put out a budget call already to the departments, have you not?
Uh, just a preliminary, to get an idea.
Okay, so you're getting some rough ideas of what they're asking for, and this was basically a level services request, or?
Yeah, uh, excuse me, yeah, basically a level service, level funded, technically, I asked for all three originally, and I found out that our, our level service is essentially level funded, I mean, we are very to the bone, there's no fat on anything, so to ask for anything different would have been, you know, fifty dollars off of the office supply type of thing, so, I, I just revise that to have, you know, level funded slash services, and then if there was an option for additional, I guess responsible services, provide additional services for, you know, the citizens, that, that's what I would go off of.
I see, okay, alright, good, so eventually after the holidays, we'll be dealing with budget meetings, and obviously we're gonna have our quarterly meeting with FinCom at some point in early January, and we'll start off with that too, so, sounds good, okay. Our next select board meeting will be September, I wish September, December, December twenty-third, and then hopefully into the new year, January sixth and January twentieth, as it stands right now, and so if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm agreeing to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, we are adjourned at seven-thirty, eight P M, thank you.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.